Okay, I'm starting recording.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Urbana Planning Commission Public Hearing on Application for a Special Use Permit 2022-01 Oyster Road Dock LLC Care of Louis Hall for 41 Oyster Road in Prens 20A-1-113. And first on the agenda is roll call for the Planning Commission. And so if you can answer here, Hank Dunton?
Here.
Wanda Holberg?
Here.
Gary Lister?
Here.
Don Dreher?
Here.
And Carol Williams?
Here.
Okay, and Mary Hanson, the Chair, is also here at this time. So, again, this is a public hearing for a special use permit for 41 Oyster Road. And at this time, I will refer to Roy Keim, our Zoning Administrator, for a presentation.
Hello. I will be assisted when I fail by our town attorney Andrea.
He never fails.
This is a, the Planning Commission is holding a public hearing as Commissioner, or talking to Mr. Chairman Hanson, said, "I'm gonna start out with a short review of zoning in Urbana." And this is a, this is a classic case because it's got so many elements in it. It's got more than anything I've ever handled and anybody else will ever handle. So if you wanna teach somebody how to do zoning in Urbana, you hand them this plot. Start out with zoning, you think that, we got a zoning map. It's got a map of where everything is. We've got R1, which is the residential home, and there's gonna be a...
Pink fingers. No, 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 fingers.
Two fingers.
There you go.
Alright. So at any rate, most of Urbana is R1. B1 is business. That's kind of in red here. B2 is what we're talking about now, it's special. And there used to be some industrial space, but we don't have that anymore. At any rate, we have districts that are enumerated. R1 is low-density residential. R2 is high-density residential. B1 is commercial, like everything on Virginia Street and parts of Cross Street. B2 is special waterfront mixed. That's down by the marinas, portside grill, where the condos are, and this little piece of property. Also, light industrial, which I said we don't have anymore. But in addition to these five sections of zones, we have overlays. We've got the Chesapeake Bay Protection Act, we've got the historic district, and we've got the flood plan. The flood plain.
There you go. Get away.
Oh, good. So, that's what we have. In each one of these districts, you have two kinds of ways you can get use. You can get use by right, or you can get uses that are permitted with a special use permit. If it's by right, you don't have to do anything else. If you're in an R1 zone, you wanna build a residential house, you can do it. If you wanna do something other than a bunch of those things, you have to get a special use permit. And each one of the five sections lists what can be done there and what can be done with a special use permit.
And so, Roy, if I can just add to that. A special use permit is an additional zoning action on top of the original zone. Like sometimes, somebody might have a piece of agricultural property and they wanna zone it to commercial, and then also apply for a special use permit within that zone. So it's, it's a separate type of zoning action.
Okay, and when you, when you get a special use permit, the zoning doesn't change. This is, this piece of property is going to still stay B2, but it's going to have a special use for it. And that's why we're here. We're here to hear about a special use permit for some land in B2. And for approval of a special use permit application, the Planning Commission shall give due regard to the nature and conditions of all the adjacent structures and the probable effect upon them of the proposed use, which it will also take into account the special characteristics, logistics of the site, design, construction methods, operations, and effect on traffic control, pro offers, and special consideration for any special aspects of the project that may be proposed by the applicant. After notice and hearing is required herein, if it should find that the proposed establishment or use is consistent with a comprehensive plan and all the regulations and chapters of the town code, not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Urbana, the Planning Commission shall make recommendations regarding the property to the town council for review and consideration. So that's why we're here. That's all we're talking about. Whether the use that is requested can be permitted in this B1. The use is by right in B2. Use is by right in B2. Marinas, docks, small-scale associated buildings to be used. So that's like the marina that's down there now that the Andersons have, and other things. Also, you could use, have stores for the sale and retail sale of food. That's gonna be a long mention. Good there. Yeah. Retail for food, seafood, and in some instances, short-term rentals. Now, short-term rentals make it, there are a whole bunch of other regulations that deal with short-term rentals that really don't apply here. Okay. Uses permitted by a special use permit are in B2, are any principal buildings or use permitted in R2 zone. R2 zones, districts. The ones that are permitted by right are any building or structure permitted in R1, low-residential, or multifamily, special regulations, attached single-family home by town councils. So if you had a special use permit, you could have a single, you know, structure, low-residential, low intensity residential. You could have condos if you got the special use permit. You can do that by right. Now, we're looking at this.
Well, wait, when you do only, when you're scrolling up, only use one finger.
Yes. This is 41 Oyster. These are the condos, right here. This is the parking lot. This is portside, right here. This is where Mr. Arthur lives, up on the hill. And if you have been down there recently, you will realize that a whole bunch of construction is going on in here. They've had to replace this bulkhead, they've had to redo the pool. And the only way the people who are doing all that work have been able to get in there is accessing over this 41 Oyster Road, which Mr. Lewis has graciously allowed them to do because they have real trouble getting in there. Yeah. So, this is, this is the piece of property that we're talking about. And it's two tenths of an acre. It's not big, it's very small. And the question is, you know, kinda what uses would you put that to? Okay. Now, this has been a long, complicated process. And what I was talking about before, I said, you know, you gotta look at this one for things that get involved in something that's really complicated in the zone. The Halls applied for a VMRC permit, which they got, to construct the bulkhead that goes around here. And for a dock that goes out here. That permit was granted in February of 2021 by the VMRC. And that, we're not discussing that, that's all done. They also applied for an encroachment permit because under the Bay Act, you're supposed to be 100 feet from the bay and have an RPA. But there are a whole bunch of exceptions, and they fit within one of those exceptions. Their exception was, this was reconstruction. This land had been used for something before and had non-permeable surfaces. There were a lot of gravel all over the place. And they put forth a plan that Bay Design carefully worked out that said, okay, if we do these couple of things, we can not encroach any further on the land than we already have. That was granted. I looked that over, I had people from the Department of Environmental Quality looking over. But it, you know, it's tough, it's hard to do. And they, they're gonna have to do a little mitigation according to the, a plan they submitted. Okay, then, they filed this application for a special use permit in the first of August of this year. What's gonna go on now is, we're gonna have this hearing. The Planning Commission's gonna make a recommendation to the town council. The town council. And the Planning Commission, in their recommendation, will either recommend to approve or disapprove this special use. The town council will then have a hearing and approve or disapprove the PC recommendation. Then we're gonna have to have some plans and specifications and renderings as to what this thing's gonna look like, where it's gonna be on the property. We don't need that now. If, in fact, the commission and the town council disapproved this special use permit, there'd be no reason to go through all the expense of getting those documents together. So the reason that there aren't any specific plans and renderings at this point is it's premature to have them. Once we have those, an application's got to be made to Historic Architectural Review Board for a certificate of approval to make sure that it fits in with what's around. Then, after the council considers what the Historic Review Board has recommended, they'll, they'll take action, they'll accept it or they won't accept it. After they get done with that, it comes back to me and I look for a zoning review to make sure that they have proper setbacks and, you know, height restrictions and everything else. We're not at that point yet, and they can't get a building permit until we have finished all these steps. So that is basically a review of what, from a zoning standpoint, where we are.
Okay, alright. Alright, so now, we close the presentation by the zoning administrator, Mr. Keim, and they wanna hear the presentation of the applicant, Mr. Hall. And if you would stand at the lectern so that, for the recording purposes, please.
And Roy, can you turn off that microphone down there? The, the one on the corner. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, first of all, everybody. I haven't done this before, and I haven't attended any of these hearings, but I understand that it is typical for the property owner to give some history of the property and then a summary of what the owner intends to do with the property. Roy has taken part of my presentation already, but that's okay, that's part of what he had to do. To start with the history, my mom and dad moved here, moved the family here in 1960 when my dad became the constinee for Texaco Fuel Oil Products. So as a kid, I spent a lot of time at what we referred to as the plant. And that was the Texaco Bulk Plant, which is, was on the property. I spent a tremendous amount of time there because, like, after school, weekends, that sort of thing, I would, that was where I went. Spent a lot of time pulling weeds. Pulling weeds was one of the things that my dad loved to get us to do. My older brother still will not pull a weed even today. I don't mind pulling them as much, but he hates pulling weeds because of all he had to do when we were young. I also spent time loading trucks. I've got a rendering here, a picture of the property, like, and I think it was taken, like, in the 70s. So this would have been, like, if you can see right here, and many of you cannot see this, but, and I'm sorry, it's not bigger. But the bulk tanks were here on the property. And they were huge tanks, and we used to, I used to drive the truck in here, or when I was old enough to reach the pedals, I would meet the drivers out here and make them let me bring the truck in and load it. So I would back it in here, or pull it in here, and then back into the loading dock and do that. So I spent a lot of time doing that. Also spent a lot of time crabbing all along the, the shoreline there. Pretty much every pole at the time, I mean, you could go to poles, to the pilings all around the creek, and there were, there were crabs on every pole. Maybe that's an exaggeration, but the older you get, you know, the, the more you can exaggerate those times. So I'd also spend a lot of time watching the trucks pull in next door to the grain bins. Whoa, there it is. So you can see, the southern states had the grain bins there. And I'd go over and watch them pull into that little house there, or structure beside the grain bins, and watch them, you know, tip it, tip the trucks up, and then they'd pull the hatch in the back and fill the grain silos. So that was really a cool thing for me to do when I was a kid. Back then, we received transports of gas and fuel oils from tanker ships. And had large, like I said, large storage tanks were on the property. And I'm not sure when they were installed on the property, years and years ago before we got here. But the office building, I'm sure dated back to the early 1900s. There was actually a concrete structure underneath the old office that was there that was dated, they had a 1908 written into the concrete. So I assume that it was done about that time. And the warehouse building, which was next door to it, was done, I'm sure, about that time as well. Urbana was a very different place when I was growing up here. I was thinking about this when I was trying to make my comments up, and just thinking about all the things that were in Urbana then that are not here now. And it was pretty amazing. Some of the things that I was remembering, I had kinda forgotten about. But there were two auto dealerships in Urbana. Two grocery stores, hardware stores, multiple seafood businesses along the waterfront, the grain silos, the southern states, the Swirly Top, which was, Wanda, you remember that? Swirly Top, the Repana Theater, we had a theater. Land and Sea Shop, which is similar to the West Marine today. Norton Food Company, laundromat, dry cleaners, appliance store, three gas stations were here, a five and 10 cent store, and two clothing stores. So, pretty amazing. It was actually a great place to grow up. We didn't totally appreciate it then because the kids always complained about it being, you know, small-town, nothing to do, and all that. But we actually had a heck of a lot of stuff to do. Crabbing, fishing, water skiing, swimming, baseball, football, basketball, the theater. We had a lot of things to do. But like I said, kids like to complain. Dad bought the property from Texaco in 1977, after the storage tanks had been removed from the property. And then he sold the business in 1981 and continued to be employed by the new owner for years. And I think it was probably as much as 10 years he continued to work for the new owner. After the new company closed the Urbana office, Dad rented the property to various people, including a guy by the name of Votro. Some of you may have known Mr. Votro. I didn't know him, but I understand he was a character. And when he left town, he was, he rented from us and he had lots of storage in, in our buildings down there. When he left town, he left every bit of it. It was like he just scattered. And we tried to find him, and my brother knew him and tried to get in touch with him and never worked out. Also rented it to Bill Height, and Bill stored his boat there and rented slips to others. There was even a restaurant there, believe it or not, in the store, in the warehouse building. And I don't know how they had that approved, but, because that building was kinda rough by that time. But there was a restaurant there, it even had outdoor, over-the-water seating, which was pretty cool. I actually did, never went there either. I was really busy at that time with my career in Richmond, so I, I guess I just didn't make it down often enough to, to be able to go there. Plus, my mother was an incredible cook, so I didn't wanna go out to, to eat when I came down to visit. So, then, in 2016, the fire took place next door at the marina, and was obviously devastating for the marina, and, and also for our property and the town, for that matter. And because of the extent of the damage, we decided to demolish the warehouse at that time. And whether or not that was a mistake, I don't know if anybody would ever be able to figure that out. We could have rebuilt it, but the stability of the building was in question. It was listing, had all kinds of structural problems. So, and that was before the fire. So after the fire, even, even greater damage. So maybe it was the right thing to do to take it down. I don't know what we would have put back up there. If we had replaced it, then we would have had a building there blocking the view. So maybe it was okay the way it was. The, the question of grandfathering has come up a number of times, but according to VMRC, and they told me right away when they came down to look at it, said, grandfathering really doesn't mean anything anymore so far as the waterfront is concerned. They'll take it into consideration, but they don't have to, they're not tied to grandfathering. And I think the only, the only thing that I know of that is maybe a little bit different on that is boathouses. Boathouses, if they had been there before and they had sides on them, then you can, you can maintain that. If you're building a new boathouse, you can't have sides on it. So that's the only time I know that grandfathering really makes a big difference these days. So, moving forward, once my mom and dad passed away, the LLC was in my dad's name and it went to my siblings and me. So I have two sisters and a brother and myself, and I bought at their interests shortly after my dad passed away in, in 2020. I had the bulkhead repaired and expanded and got permits for floating docks. This was all very interesting because of the surveys of the property were so inconsistent. The property and the marina were actually built, to a large extent, on oyster shells, believe it or not. So the lines changed over time. And when you look at this picture, the water used to be, like, right here. The old survey showed water, like, right here. So when the survey was done, and Mr. Mullins and I got together and tried to figure out where the lines were, I didn't have this picture. If I had had this picture, I kept telling them, I pulled the truck up here, then I backed in there to load the trucks, but I never had any proof, and there were no surveys that I could point to that would show it. But anyway, I lost a little bit of property there. But I also gained some in that negotiation with Mr. Mullins. And we, we had a good relationship, and it all worked out just fine. So because of the complexity of the project, like Roy said, I hired Bay Aging to help me try to figure out exactly what we could do with the property. What did I say? No, I didn't hire Bay Aging. I'm sorry. Bay Design. Okay. The plan that they did culminated with an encroachment application, which was approved, and included what was supposed to be a tiny home on the property. And, oh, yeah. So, anyway, and what we had done was, we went ahead and had this, and once the encroachment application was approved, we went ahead and had this, this tiny home plan done. And it's for, I mean, if you can see, pretty neat little place. It was supposed to be just a one-bedroom down there and tied in with the dock and everything. And it really was kinda designed to replace the old office building. I didn't want to really take down the old office building. It had a lot of meaning to us, and didn't wanna do that, but I couldn't, I had to raise it, and everybody that I had looked at it said, if you raise it, it's gonna crumble. It just wasn't, it, it couldn't stand to be raised. So we went ahead and, and took it down. Subsequent to getting the application approved, we thought, at that point, we're good to go. You know, everything else is just gonna be a formality. But later on, we found out that the tiny house, which was part of the application, was not specifically referred to as a residence. It was only referred to as a building. So we may end up being able to do a building there at some point, but it would not be like a residence. So therefore, we ran into problems when we went to get the zoning done with Roy. He said, oh, you know, you can't do, you can't make that a house, a residence. And that's when I said, uh-oh, okay, let's, let's try to figure out where we go from here. So we've run into a lot of problems along the way here with the fire and, and the renovation and the extensions and getting all the permits and all that kinda stuff. But we are still hopeful that we can eventually have a completed project. As a result of the history of all of this, and the fact that my family's been involved with it so, so many years, it really is, the property really is like a part of our family. I can't even joke about, to certain people, about selling the property without being threatened. So that's, that's not gonna be something that I'm gonna be able to do. Our goal has always been to develop the property to enhance the waterfront aesthetics and to be good neighbors. And I hope it's obvious that we try to be good neighbors, both with the condos and the marina next door. And like Roy said, we've been in a position this summer to help the condos with the issues that they have, so we're happy to do that, and hopefully that has been helpful. So we were, and we were actually in a whole pattern anyway on that because the, the floating docks couldn't be installed until the pilings for the tiny house were done. So, you know, we, we thought we were gonna have, the next step was gonna be to put those pilings in and then install the... those pilings in and then install the floating docks. But obviously, that's not the way it turned out. So, that brings us to the present. Our current intent is to build a residence on the property to be used by my family. At this point, we are thinking about a structure that would probably be about 1,200 square feet. And... This is a picture that I found, gosh, now, I guess it's been years ago, that I just thought would look so neat there. And it's just kind of a beachy-looking cottage thing, two bedrooms. And it's about, I think it's 1,267 square feet. And so, for whatever that's worth, you know, we don't have specific plans made, like Roy said, because we figured we better not spend any more money until we find out what we can do, like we've been doing up to this point. So, we held off on the design. But at this point, the floating docks should be ready to be installed anytime. I'm just waiting on the contractor now. So, we should have that done soon. So, I think at this point, that's all I have to say. I don't know if I get questions now or...
Yes, we can open the floor to questions for Mr. Hall at this time. And I should have opened the floor to Mr. Kime as well for questions. So, I think we're going to need to return to that. Okay. Yes, so, Mr. Hall? Questions for Mr. Hall? There is one person, Mike Jolly.
No, 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 that's going to be in the public hearing.
Oh, got it.
This is just the planning commission opportunity to ask questions.
Of the planning commissions?
Yes.
Okay. All right. This is new to me, I think, to all of us.
And you don't have to, if you want to...
Right.
You don't have any right now, you can ask them later.
I do have one question, and that is, I know this was previously used as a fuel facility. What kind of environmental testing and mitigation has been done to make sure that it's safe for human occupancy as a dwelling?
Well, we haven't done any testing. I mean, it's been... It hasn't had those fuel tanks on it for 50 years.
So, like a half-life, huh?
Yeah, exactly. So, I don't know. No, there's been no testing. So, but I would... I can't imagine that it wouldn't be safe for humans to live there after all this time.
I don't know. Can I... May I ask counsel if what are... Do you know what the regulations are with regard to... Because we're talking about a B2 and, you know, possibly permitting use as a dwelling.
It's possible that there could be lingering environmental impacts.
Yeah.
We have no way of knowing without knowing what chemicals were there. But that is not necessarily something that the planning commission is required to consider. That would be incumbent upon Mr. Hall
Okay.
to take action.
Okay. And I know one of the conditions of just having a residential permit granted is to comply with all town of Urbana, county of Middlesex, Commonwealth of Virginia, federal laws and ordinances.
Right.
And I presume that sort of thing would be covered in that?
Yes. He may wish to go above and beyond it.
Okay. Okay.
What is the square footage of the lot?
I couldn't tell you.
It's about 9,000 square feet.
Okay. I also have questions about... What can you tell us about where on the footprint of the lot any kind of residence would be built? For instance, would it be built over the water? Would it be built on land? What are the kind of the restrictions of where it could be built?
It can't be built over the water. They wouldn't allow that. It would be with reasonable offsets from both of the property lines on...
Adjacent neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
And then within the... From the line out on the western line, and then from the bulkhead. And I'm not sure exactly what those measurements would have to be, but that shouldn't be a problem in the encroachment. Do you have access to the encroachment application?
We do not. I don't know if Roy does.
That's...
Chesapeake Bay.
Oh.
And that's not...
Not part of this.
That's not part of this issue. But as...
So, that's... Yeah.
As I would think, and this is something that, as I said, remember when you got down to the last thing, the zoning requirements, the setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
That's what would govern. And I think you'd probably have to be 40 feet back from your front line, have 25 feet between your back line, which would be the bulkhead, and your back door, and like 10 feet on either side. So, he's got enough land to fit in that envelope.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason I asked about the encroachment application is it was actually designed... It was put on that exactly where this structure would be. And the dimensions I got from this house that I was showing you. So...
Now, why does the lot?
Just because it's subject to the Chesapeake Bay Act.
Yeah, right.
Because in the town, it's 90, I think, 90 feet wide for a house?
I believe it's 80 feet
80?
on the street. But that's if the lot was not in existence before the zoning laws came into effect, which was in 1972. And this lot existed well before that. And that's basically why that one structure that was there that we've talked about being grandfathered, or maybe not grandfathered, that's why that was allowed to stay where it was. They didn't have to remove it because it was there before the zoning laws came into effect.
You're talking about the 12 by 18?
Yes, the 12 by 18.
Yes.
In an emergency, would a fire truck be able to get through that road to the other properties since we've already had issues?
To the other properties?
Where the Mullins is. You know how they've got the rope across there now?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Can you get a fire truck through there?
Oh, yeah, you could, yes. Yes, you could.
So, we need to have that.
Yeah. Yeah, you could.
Would this be your primary residence, then, when you finish the building?
We're not anticipating it being primary. We don't really want to move, but it would just be used by my family. I have other family outside of town that would come and stay there. And I'm sure that my daughter would like to use it some. And we would probably use it some, you know, and use the docks and all that kind of thing, too.
What's your awareness of our short-term rental ordinance in town as far as, like, if you were using it as a short-term rental, like Airbnb or VRBO or that sort of thing?
I haven't read those regulations. I mean, I'm sure that I would, you know, get up to speed on that if I intended to do that. I mean, if that comes around.
How would you access the property? That, you know, given the road that has the rope across it, would you get at it that way or through, back by Portside?
I would come around by the... In front of the condos.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's just closed off temporarily because it's construction?
No.
It's actually closed off between his property and Urbey.
I believe Oyster Road ends at the end of Mr. Hall's property, and then the Mullins...
Yeah, Anderson's.
The Urbey parking lot is not part of Oyster Road. It's not maintained by VDOT.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, it's actually a dead-end road where the rope is. And it would be up to, I guess, Mr. Hall or Andy Anderson to determine whether or not they were going to allow through traffic there, as it has been in the past.
Yeah, it was open at one time, but I could always understand. Mr. Mullins talked about that. And with that small area to get through beside the restaurant building, I mean, to have two-way traffic through there all the time. And it's amazing how much traffic there is down there. If I don't rope off the entrance to my lot, it's a turnaround place. And I mean, there... It's amazing how many people come in there and use it as a turnaround spot.
We're going to save...
Oh, the car, yeah.
We're going to save public comment for just a minute. We're going to have a chance. We're almost there. Okay, other questions for Mr. Hall? Well, no, actually, I have another question. And that is, this is, I think, the last available piece of B2 property on the waterfront in Urbana, as I understand it. And I guess one of the things I'd like to hear is why there's a compelling reason for the planning commission to change it to residential, away from potential business property.
So, he's not foreclosing a business use? He's requesting additional zoning to have a residential use? If somebody were to buy it from him... I'm sorry, I know you would never sell it.
I can't.
Okay.
But if somebody were to buy it and they wanted to have a business use, that is still a by right underlying zoning?
It is still B2.
Yeah.
Andrea, according to the proposed motion for approval, item number five, it says, "Once a property is dedicated for use as a residential dwelling, no commercial use shall be permitted on the property."
Correct, at the same time.
At the same time?
Yes, sir.
But the B2 zoning could still be used, so if...
Yes, if the residential use were abandoned, the B2 zoning, the by right uses are still in place.
Even if the ownership doesn't change?
Yes, sir.
So, at any point, the Halls could say, "Okay, we're not using it as a home anymore. We're going to lease it out to someone to be used as a B2 by right."
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure.
Yes, sir.
But I think the chairman's question still stands and still makes sense for us, which is, I mean, presumably, once you build a house there, it would be awfully expensive to decide not to have it be used for residential purposes. And I think the concern that we've talked about is an awful lot of the waterfront in Urbana has been swallowed up and is now owned privately. And so, she was asking, this is the last, you know, piece of property that is undeveloped and that is commercial. And presumably, you guys have thought through commercial versus residential uses of it, and we'd love to hear more about your thoughts.
Well, from a commercial standpoint, I'm not sure what you would have there. I mean, the parking for a commercial use would be very, very limited. So, I can't imagine what kind of commercial use you would have there that wouldn't... That you wouldn't need some parking. So, that was one of the things. Just the size of the lot had a lot to do with, you know, consideration for making it a business. And then, of course, you'd have to think about what kind of business. I mean, what would you do? Build a restaurant? Again, there's no parking. An event center or something like that, same problem. So, the size of the lot has a lot to do with, you know, thinking that maybe the highest and best use for it would be a residential use.
Did you ever think about a houseboat? Because we've had plenty of those.
Yeah, I have, as a matter of fact. But, I mean, you mean, instead of building anything?
Yeah, if you wanted to live there, just use a houseboat and move it around.
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility. I had considered that. That has its limitations. I mean, it's in the winter, it's kind of tough to live on a boat like that. I mean, with water and sewer and all that kind of stuff. So, not thinking that's... I wouldn't want that to be my goal. I mean, if I were to get something like that, it may be in addition to a place that I can go and be warm and have the other amenities.
You mentioned possibly building another building. What... If you could just tell us what you might consider building down there instead of the house?
Like storage. You know, they're... You know, like for having kayaks and canoes and paddleboards and all that kind of stuff, you've got to have a place to put all that stuff. Now, that might end up being a little bit more expensive than I could justify because it's going to have to be razed or it's going to flood. At some point, it's going to flood. So, I have to keep that in mind, too. So, those plans are really up in the air. But knowing that I can do that, and like I said before, the initial thing was to put something in the same footprint as the old building, which would just be neat to do. So, I just don't know. I haven't thought through that far after not being able to do...
Are there pilings there already that you would build on?
No. No, they had to be installed as well.
What were the original dimensions of the original building?
12 by 8.
Pardon?
12 by 8.
12 by 18.
12 by 18?
12 by 18.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
12 by 18, okay.
Yeah.
So, he would be limited for storage building to something that's 12 by 18?
I see.
Well, the...
If it were to be placed in the same place that the now torn-down, I called shed, you said building, was...
Is that where Oyster Road signs was? Is that the building?
Yes.
Okay.
What other questions from planning commission members?
I've got a question for Mr. Kime.
May we ask a question to Mr. Kime at this time?
Sure.
Okay.
The condominiums, what is their current zoning? Is it...
That's B2. I was going to mention that.
B2 with a special use.
B2 with a special use permit, as is the Portside Restaurant.
Okay.
And Mr. Hall pointed out that a lot of activity occurred on Urbana Creek in the old days, when it was really used as a transportation hub for commercial activities. That doesn't happen anymore. And we have people who come in in boats as visitors. But big ships don't come in and pick up the grain and don't pick up the oil or drop it off.
So, the waterfront is essentially B2 from the bridge all the way around through the town marina property, correct?
Up, right, up to Montague's. For some reason, the town marina is not B2.
Okay, up to Montague's.
Right.
Which is...
There's no land there. I mean, there's just...
But what is that zone? Is that zone R1?
No, that's B2. Up to Montague's is B2.
Montague's is B2?
Yep.
But he's got several lots, adjoining lots, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, the marina part is B2, but...
The only ones... Only part that would be B2 would be where his new marina is.
Right.
To the land side, I guess that's the west. That's R1.
That's what I... Okay. That's what I thought I remembered, but...
But it is important to note that there have been at least two special use exceptions for B2. One at least for Portside, one for the condos.
So, any other questions from...
Yes, just if I might. So, the building that had been there, would that be the footprint for a new building? Is that what we're looking at? I'm not...
Pretty much. The building that we anticipated was going to be a little bit bigger. It was 16 by... 16 by 24, I think, on the encroachment permit.
So, pretty much the same location?
Same location.
And just...
Yes, it would just extend out a little bit.
And the problem with that is that if you expand a use, a structured use, a non-conforming use, which that building was, you'd have to go through a public hearing and have to go through the whole thing, just like we're doing now. So, cost-effectively, it's not a really good idea. Because on these pieces of property, and I'll get to it in a minute, you are allowed to have one main dwelling. And, you know, you can have ancillary buildings, but not... They can't be used as dwellings, basically.
Yeah, I think she was just asking about the tiny house, like approximately.
Right, just looking at the photo and trying to get an idea.
I think, though, tell me if I'm understanding it right, that if you built a building of the same dimensions as the original building on the original footprint, then you're... then you're not required to abide by the, by current setbacks?
That's right.
Okay, but once you get outside of that original footprint, not within it, but outside of that original footprint, then you have to abide by current setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or get a special use permit, which would be very difficult to get.
Okay.
And I, I think that when you talk about expanded, if you added a second floor, to me, that would be an expansion. It would be on the same footprint, but it would be, you know, twice the square footage.
And just to clarify, we're talking about the second building. We're not talking about the primary residential?
That's right, we're talking about that.
Yeah. Yeah. Other questions from planning commission? Okay, so we are going to close that portion, and we're going to open the public hearing portion, which is for the public to ask questions and-
To, just to comment?
Oh, to comment, to comment. I'm learning, sorry. So for the public to comment. And that was the one person that we have that signed up was Mike Jolly, so if you would come to the microphone.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Michael Jolly. I am the board member and the president of the Oyster Harbor condo association. Roy sent out registered mail to all of our tenants or our owners there, and I have not heard one peep out of any of them. I have a pretty extensive background in zoning myself, so I, I personally support Mr. Hall's application for the special use permit, anxious to see it follow through, but I just wanted to let you know, he's been a gracious neighbor, allowed, have allowed us to work off of his property, and since I didn't hear any peep from my group, which, there's a lot of opinions there, I'd say that they're good, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you heard anything, Roy.
Only good things.
So council, are others allowed to ask questions if they wish to or comment?
Yes.
They're allowed to comment?
Anybody else wants to comment until you-
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? So we're going to close the public hearing, and what I need to ask now is whether or not planning commission members know how they want to vote. Do they want to vote in favor of the special use permit or against the special use permit? And if you don't know, we have the option of recessing for one week to ten days to then meet back and make a final decision. If you're ready to make a decision, let's make a decision, so.
Do you want to consider the staff recommendations or not?
We didn't, we didn't get the staff recommendations in your presentation, and that was one thing that I was wondering about.
We are fancy here in Urbana.
Yeah, we are, we are.
He's got the one finger down.
Would you like to give?
Yes, please.
The suspense is killing us.
Everybody's seen this, this is going out of order a little bit, but-
That's why I wasn't sure.
You've heard about what the code references are. The findings kind of have been that there are no wetland, native plants, rare plants, threatened or endangered animals, and that the lot does butt banner creek. We notified all the adjacent, abutting landowners, which consisted of all the condo owners, and each one of them got a letter, and I sent the ones that had registered letters in addresses other than Urbana, I physically took copies of the letter down there so they would be aware of it if they were in there. The, the findings are that the code provides for the construction of a residential structure in B-2 by a special use permit. For several past years, this lot has been vacant with the exception of a legal, non-conforming structure. That's the twelve by eighteen building that was used as an office for the few storage facility. That has since been removed in order to do the work on the bulkhead. The legal, non-conforming structure was built and used prior to the adoption of the code and is thus grandfathered in its size and location. This legally, non-conforming use was demolished about three months ago with perhaps the intent to reconstruct it after the bulkhead and docks were completed. In my view, there will be no apparent negative impact of the, on the joint properties. If the application is approved for an SUP to construct a residential dwelling, the twelve by eighteen structure that was demolished may only be reconstructed and used as an auxiliary, accessory structure to the residential dwelling. There can not be two main structures on a lot. Staff would recommend additional conditions be placed on any permit, and these conditions will help clarify or limit the special use permit. Those conditions are included in the proposed motion that is below, and what council or commission is supposed to do is either approve this motion for the SUP or deny it. And I can go through the- fourteen conditions that I would recommend being applied to the special use permit to be recommended to the council if it's necessary. Basically, all it does is ensure that the property would be used in accordance with residential requirements that are in the R-1 zoning code, but I can go through them if you'd want, if you wanted, if that's worthwhile.
So to recap, you're finding that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent and compatible with the neighborhood-
Yes.
Subject to fourteen conditions as outlined in, in the staff report?
Yes, thank you.
May I ask one more question, Louis?
Sure.
I'm pretty clear where you're thinking about the outbuilding, where the old building needs to be, but I'm still not clear where you want to put the house.
He doesn't, that's a later decision.
The house can be placed anywhere on the lot as long as it meets the current zoning?
Right. And they haven't had-
So would it block the road, though?
No.
In fact, that is, that is, Roy, would you read the paragraph at the beginning of your proposed motion? It might answer some of those questions.
It would be, it would be located someplace in here.
Okay.
Okay. Because the planning commission finds that after notice and hearing as required herein, that the proposed special use permit for 20A1113, which is forty-one Oyster Road, will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working on the premises or in the neighborhood, or will unreasonably impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties, nor increase congestion in the streets, or impair the character of the district or adjacent districts, nor be incompatible with the comprehensive plan, or be likely to reduce or impair the value of buildings or structures or property, surrounding property, but that an establishment or use will be in accordance with chapter seventeen of the Urbana Town Code. Therefore, the planning commission of the town of Urbana recommends to the town council approval of the special use permit 20-02 with the following conditions. And then the fourteen conditions are listed.
What is, what are the fourteen conditions based on?
Just to ensure that, given that it's a relatively density intense area, lots of people living close together, to make sure that there's minimal impact to the neighbors. That's really basically it. You can put any type of a condition on a special use permit in order to address any effects of the use or to mitigate any effects. So, for example, you couldn't say the house has to be yellow, but, you know, you can address parking, construction.
Exterior lighting, yeah, right.
Down, you know, big is, I can't talk. The manner in which lighting is-
The direction of lighting.
Constructed on the property, yeah.
So are we open for planning commission discussion at this point or not yet?
I, planning, is it planning commission discussion or is it planning commission decision?
Either way.
Okay. Okay, what would you like to discuss?
Well, when I was initially made aware of this, I was not in favor of granting a special use permit because I feel that we need as much B-2 waterfront as possible. But after going down and visiting the site, walking it and looking at it, it's my feeling that any B-2, B-2 permitted uses would cause an undue hardship on the condominiums because there would be no, through traffic through the parking lot of the Marina, you would have to go in and turn around and go back out. The road is very narrow there. Any by right use, B-2 use, I think is going to be a hardship on the, on the residents of the condominiums. And it is a very small piece of land, so aside from a very small seafood shop, I think pretty much anything else is going to require, you know, you might be able to have a kayak canoe rental place there. Again, there's no parking for that if you, if you do that. So I think that the best use of this property probably would be BT, granting a special use permit, but remaining as, as B-2, not rezoning it. And that way, future generations, you know, if, if things change, you know, it could still be B-2 zone, but I'm afraid if we don't grant the special use permit or council decides not to, that that lot is going to sit vacant for another fifteen, twenty years. I don't feel like it's going to be developed. So I'm ready to vote, I'm ready to make the motion that we-
Recommend that the town-
Recommend that the town council, as per the proposed motion.
In the staff.
So I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Any other discussion? No. Okay, and so the motion is to vote in favor of granting the special use permit? And so are we ready to vote? Okay, Hank Dunton?
Yeah, aye.
And Wanda Holberg?
Yes.
Okay, and Gary Lester?
Aye.
Okay, Don Dreier?
Yes.
Okay, and Carol Williams?
Yes.
Okay, and the commission chairman also votes yes, so. I think you're approved and ready to move on.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
No, I'm not, I'm in the peanut gallery now.
Well, we've, this now goes before the town council.
And it will be, uh, requested as well here?
Yes, yes. So there is, there's one, I know, lots of steps, lots of steps, but it will go before the town council, so, okay? Thank you for, for coming this evening, everyone. Appreciate your being here and your questions and thoughts, and to the halls as well. And now, I'd do, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and those in favor of adjourning?
Ayes.
Yes, aye.
Yes?
Aye, yes.
All right.